Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Please welcome to the February 5th legislative session. Please turn off all cell phones or silence them and electronic devices. And everyone please rise for the moment of silence and pleasure of life.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, Dillard, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Breschek. Twenty, President one absent.
Okay, before we go to public participation, we've got two proclamations. One for Archie DeWolff, DeWolff Bellinger Jr., and I'd like to invite up his family. John, Mark, Eric, Alice, Airport Director of Aviation, Ed Magrida, and Bill Kelly, Chairman of the Airport Advisory Board, and Anne Marie Kelly as well. And also Jeff Berkman, legislator from Middletown, from Long Island. Archie was. Thank you. Head, did you want to say a few words first?
On behalf of Orange County Airport, I wanted to just note how important it is to honor these significant members that brought the airport to what it is. And Archie was a very instrumental part of the growth of the airport and the state-of-the-art facility that it is today. So it's an honor to be here and it's an honor to note his support and his tireless efforts, albeit voluntary, it's voluntary effort and the amount of time that he put in is extremely noteworthy. So thank you, Mrs. Felonzer and the Felonzer family, and it's great to be here to honor.
Bill, did you want to say a few words? Never been short of words before.
I'd like to say that in regard to the Felonzer family here today, privileged to be able to honor them for the work that Archie has done. I met Archie 55 years ago when he was an engineer for NLR and I was an engineer for Felonzer. And since then, professionally, we've stayed on board with jobs together and customers that I had needed to have the assistance of a professional. Archie's never let us down, never let us customers down. I have his regard for him and it's been a pleasure serving on the board with him. Ideas, great insight, and also know, of course, we knew my wife, go back a long time for a bunch of other things, but working with the three children, I'll say, of Archie, it's been a real pleasure. I've got a couple of them pretty well, anyway. And I'd say that the thing he's done for the county professionally also in doing design work for many facilities for the county here and there, and I never heard of any of the work that he had ever done. And it's a pleasure. I miss him very much and I think what we're doing here today is very appropriate.
Thank you, Bill. Jeff Berkman, your hometown legislator, would like to say a few words. I guess you were his teacher, probably, back in the day. I hope you taught him some good things.
It was kindergarten, so the lessons were less complicated, right? That's what I learned. Archie was an outstanding community and I'm proud to know him. And, you know, the strength of our community is based on the strength of its citizens. And when I think of Archie, I think of an outstanding citizen. And I know he's proud of all of you because you're an outstanding family. So thank you for being my teacher and thank you for all the contributions that your family and Archie have made and the ones that you'll continue to make.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd like to invite up the county exec to. I don't know if you want us to read this proclamation, it's pretty long. Maybe we can... It's okay? We know about Archie's accomplishments, there's many in there.
Usually he makes me read them, so it's a... But I'm honored to be here. I've known the Felonzer family for a long time and a great, great family. I was really honored last year that the scouts were able to honor Archie. And it was, it couldn't have been perfect timing. I think, Mark, you made that happen, or somebody did in your family, and they did it at the right timing. And we had a great evening together. I think it was a wonderful tribute and a wonderful testimony to a great man, who did so much for the community. People are talking engineering contributions, but what he did for scouting a military retired officer, which he enjoyed doing that. So I know Ed is, you know, obviously happy about that as well as the family. So he couldn't have been a happier guy. I've never met somebody that was always so positive and happy. And, you know, up until the end, I remember, and I might be talking too much about this, Mark, but the routine that he had, that he still went out and hung out and did his thing up until right to the end. And I'm proud to be standing here today echoing what my colleagues and the families and friends have said, just such a great man. So thank you very much.
I'll just echo what the county exec just said. I mean, Archie was involved with so many different things, whether it was the airport, scouting, the Citizens Foundation, you name it. He was an altruistic individual, definitely a gentleman and a scholar. And he's sorely missed, Alice, he really is. I remember reading the obituary. What was it he said when he dropped the kids off at school?
Another day in which to excel.
Another day in which to excel. Remember that every day. But I will read the last resolved, or the second to last. It says, "Resolved that we, the Orange County Legislature, do hereby formally memorialize our profound sentiments on the occasion of the passing of Archie DeWolff Bellinger Jr. on behalf of ourselves and all the people of the County of Orange, to whose interest and services he was so dedicated."
So thank you for doing this for us and doing this for our family here. We very much appreciate it. I would say the one thing Archie really believed in was the County of Orange. I think we're, I think he was third generation in Orange County, fourth, and we have some children and grandchildren, so fifth and sixth generation Orange County people. If it wasn't the airport that he believed in and transportation, it was the ski hill out there, we did the electrical design out there, he was a ski patrolman out there. Obviously, we mentioned the boy scouting, his military service, but he was a true believer in that saying, "Every day in which to excel." And he was a true believer of this county, and I think it shows, and I really appreciate him being recognized here by you folks. Can't be more pleased and can't be more honored to be here in front of everybody witnessing this and being a part of this. And thank you for recognizing him and for everybody at the airport. Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
I was remiss in not mentioning that Archie and your family did the mechanical engineering on Breschek Lumber back in 1989. It was, it was fantastic job. I wish I was still there, to be honest with you. Okay, I'd like to invite up Ida Marshall. And I would like to invite down legislator Katie Benelli and Jeff Berkman. Present the proclamation. Ida is turning, or turned 100 years old, I guess. Oh, next week? Okay, the 15th.
I have the honor of going first. You are a vibrant, alive, energetic individual, and you've passed that gene right on to your whole family. I, when you go through these proclamations and citations, you know, you try to get a snapshot of who the person is, and you can't put everything in, so I thought I'd add a couple. Isn't it true that you danced with Cad Calloway at the Cotton Globe? That's what I heard. And for baseball fans, I heard that you were at Yankee Stadium and watched Babe Ruth. Anyway, it's my honor to participate honoring you on your 100th birthday, and you come from a great family. And Rochelle, I didn't even make some comment about driving on other occasions, but I had to say at least that much. Just an inside joke, folks. Congratulations. I hope you go for 120.
Again, I'm honored to be here today as well. I'm gonna stay away from the Cad Calloway and, but I will say, and I thought you were gonna steal my thunder, Jeff, the contributions you made to not only this county and this country, but with, I think, the only democratic bastion of hope right now in a very unstable world in the Middle East. If people who don't know it in the audience, if you haven't heard, Ida had raised money not only for the Zionist state but for the IDF, one of our biggest allies right now in the world. So when you think about, so I wanna shake your hand for that alone, Ida. When you think about what's going on here and the concerns in the public and the instability in the world, you've helped back one up, and obviously, you're a young lady. You helped them out in their infancy, too, with the young state over there. So I wanna thank you on behalf of residents of Orange County for that. And you're still working, your birthday is next week, and we really wish you the best. And Jeff said another 20 years, I was hoping it's another 30, 40 years. So thank you very much and God bless you. Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank Katie Benelli for asking you to come in to celebrate your pre-birthday, I guess, here today. And I forgot to recognize your daughter, Rochelle Marshall, and your grandson, Jeff Once again, I wish you a happy birthday. And somebody said you drove up until a week or two ago? You were driving up until a week or two ago?
Yes.
A few weeks ago. Wow. You could have been on that Super Bowl Dodge commercial if you played your cards right.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon to everybody as we celebrate Ida Marshall here in Orange County. It's my pleasure to stand before you. All too often, we have the opportunity to pause and give recognition to a member of our community, and I don't see anything more fitting than somebody that's going to be celebrating their 100th birthday next Saturday. So I congratulate you on that. I congratulate your family for bringing this to our attention and allowing us to be part of this. And just to follow up a little bit on Jeff's statement in regard to Babe Ruth, Babe Ruth hit his first home run the year you were born. Unfortunately, for those of us that are Yankee fans, it was for the Boston Red Sox. So, I mean, you've seen a lot of different changes in your life, and I know when I brought this attention to our staff, they said that they couldn't wait to meet you. So we really are very thrilled that you're here. And I'd like to recognize who I knew was a surprise guest for you today, but your great-granddaughter, Emily. Thank you for coming, Emily. And this is a proclamation of the Orange County Legislature and the Orange County Executive recognizing and honoring Ida Marshall on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Whereas Ida Marshall was born on February 15, 1915, and is a resident of Bluingrove, a 40-year resident of Orange County, she began her working career in a millinery shop and is still employed today here in Orange County at a yarn fabric company. Whereas Ida Marshall has been recognized and appreciated for her dedication and volunteerism and has received awards for service to the Israeli Defense Force, State of Israel Bonds, and the Jewish Federation of Orange County as a volunteer of the year. She is still an active member of Hadassah Zionist Women's Organization and Temple Aitheim, did I say that? Aitheim. Jeff was trying to coach me with that one. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community, which benefits from the wisdom, creativity, and experience this interview brings to all. Whereas Orange County recognizes the contribution of senior citizens to our community and the important role they serve in our society. Now therefore be it resolved that we, as the Orange County Legislature and the Orange County Executive, do hereby extend our best wishes to Ida Marshall on the occasion of her 100th birthday with sincere congratulations and a many more happy and productive years. Ida, congratulations.
I would like to say thank you to everybody, all these people that are here today. My honor to have all these people recognized and come to congratulate me. Thank you so much. Can I go?
The only thing I wanna say, when I told my mother that she was coming here, she said, "I didn't do anything." Because I tell her every day, inhale, and it's working. That's the secret.
And Ida, Ida, in your honor today, I'd like the minutes, the official minutes, to record this last statement. I'm Israel Chai.
Chairman Breschek, I wanted to mention one thing. We didn't know you were gonna be here today, Ed Magrida, but if you'd mind standing up for a second. Ed Magrida runs our airport in Montgomery, but this past Sunday marked his last day of service to the United States Military. Started off as a pilot, I think, when they were biplanes, and he ended up leaving when they were at P-3. Dennis Simmons and I got to know him over the years, flew the P-3 Orion, right? And how many, 29 years?
29.
29 years of service to the military. So we wanna make sure we've mentioned Ed, right, Steve? Thank you. Thank you for your service.
And no speakers before the session? And I neglected to mention that Curly Dillard hasn't excused that. So Minority Leader, or Majority Leader Bonisek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the minutes of November 6, 2014.
All in favor? Barry, Majority Leader Bonisek again?
Thank you. I move to vote collectively on item number 17, 18, and 19.
Okay, if there are no objections, the objections, these items will be voted on collectively. Are there any referrals, consents, or withdrawals?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I request that item number 7 on the agenda, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive of Orange County to Sign a Renewal Sales Tax Agreement with the Cities of Newburgh, Middletown, and Port Jervis, be withdrawn from the agenda. That's item number 7.
Okay, the sponsors were okay with that, too, right? Okay, so granted. Good. All right, we're ready to roll here. What'd I miss? Oh, I didn't go to the, I'm sorry. I had the paper over here. Okay, Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request that number 13, item number 13 on the agenda, the Bond Resolution Authorizing Rehabilitation Improvements to the Glenmere Lake Dam located in the towns of Warwick and Chester, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $3,325,000, appropriating I'm reading what the replacement item says, Mr. The one I'm withdrawing. Let me finish. Appropriating $3 million, therefore, in addition to the $325,000 previously appropriated, authorizing issuance of $1 million bonds of the county to finance a portion of said additional appropriation, and authorizing the expenditure of $1 million expected to be received from the town of Chester, and $1 million expected to be received from the Village of Florida towards the cost thereof, or redemption of the bonds or notes issued therefore, or to be budgeted as an offset to the taxes for the payment of principal and interest on said bonds or notes, be withdrawn from the agenda and replaced with replacement bond resolution.
Any objections? So 13's withdrawn. New 13 isn't, is in its place. Okay. All right, A referred to all legislators, B referred to all legislators, and AA is referred to all legislators. Resolution number 1.
Legislators Benton and Anagastakis, Resolution Authorizing the County of Orange to Vacate Decision of the Supreme Court Regarding an In-Rem Foreclosure Pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B, 1 of Local Law 2 of 2010.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Breschek. 20 eyes.
Okay, resolution 2.
Legislators Benton and DeSalvo, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Enter Into an Agreement with Certain Orange County Municipalities Provided for the Exemption From County Taxation of Lands Owned and Used By Them For Water Supply and Related Purposes Pursuant to Section 406.3 of Real Property Tax Law.
Why, your name added? Okay, Dennis Simmons. Okay, legislature Berkman as well? Okay, roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Breschek. 20 eyes.
Okay, resolution number 3.
Legislators Benton and Kulusek, Resolution Authorizing the Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-Owned Lands Acquired by Reason of a Failure to Redeem Said Lands from a Tax Sale to Orange County Pursuant to Section 10184 of the Real Property Tax Law and Orange County Amended Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Breschek. 20 eyes.
Resolution 4.
Legislators Benton and Benelli, Resolution Approving the Release of the County's Interest in and to a Certain Deed Sale Parcel to the Previous Owner of Record Pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B, 1 of Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Breschek. 20 eyes.
Yes, legislature Simmons. Okay, resolution 5.
Legislators Hines and Benelli, Resolution Authorizing the Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-Owned Lands Acquired by Reason of a Failure to Redeem Said Lands from a Tax Sale to Orange County Pursuant to Section 1136 of the Real Property Tax Law and Section 5, Paragraph A1 of the Orange County Amended Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Ikis, I'm sorry.
I'll go first.
Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Breschek. 20 eyes.
Okay, resolution number 6.
Legislators Benton and Berkman, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive of Orange County to Sign the Renewal Sales Agreement with the Cities of Newburgh, Middletown, and Port Jervis.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, present.
Absolutely. Yes. That's Melissa, Myrna, Jim, Shannon, Michael Amo, Michael Paduk. Is there anybody that doesn't wanna be added? Barry, you don't wanna be added?
I have to recuse myself on this one.
Oh, okay. I think I'm gonna recuse myself, too.
Because of my position with the Village of Warwick.
And mine with the Village of Montgomery. Even though we didn't negotiate the contract.
Okay. Jeff, you wanted to speak to him?
Hello? Yeah, okay. We still didn't get the mics fixed, Mr. Chairman. I'm on next year's budget, I swear, right? This is crazy, having bad mics. But there's nothing more important, as I said in the Ways and Means Committee and I've said on many other occasions, nothing more important, given as a county legislator, than support of the sales tax split with the three cities and my district specifically for me, which is Middletown. So I appreciate the support that my amendment received inside the Means Committee, which continued the split. If there's ever additional sales tax revenue, it would be along the same percentages that currently exists. So I'd like to thank everyone involved in my community and doing the right thing by Orange County. It was a good time for the Democrats to support the amendment and for all of us as the legislature to stand up for local governments.
I will say that the Association of Towns and Villages endorsed this overwhelmingly as well. Fudge Senator Simmons?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I concur with my Democratic colleague, but I don't believe it's a partisan issue, obviously. It's something that crosses all boundaries, and that's why I withdrew the number 7, because I thought that the modifications and the amendments that actually were made to it were right on and we support that. I wanna thank you for being aware of that and making it happen. But probably my municipality, one of the poorest in the county, actually relies on this more than most. And to say that I'm very thankful that we provide that help to the three cities that actually have more services that they actually provide than municipalities and sometimes need a little bit more support. So thank you very much, and I will be supporting you.
Okay, roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Anagastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulusek, Paduk, Ruskovich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Breschek. Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Brexha.
Abstain.
Ayes to abstentions.
Okay, resolution number eight.
Legislators Hines and Dillard, resolution of the Orange County Legislature urging the gaming facility location board to include Orange County in the 2015 request for application process for license approval and operation of a casino in Orange County.
Discussion? Legislature Amo.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's good and it's important, but I think we made a mistake from what the gaming committee said in the...from the bottom, I guess it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ninth. Whereas, in our discussion, we said that we were focusing specific on the Newburgh area. In that last half of that sentence, given this county's and prospective local communities meet governing criteria for the selection process of distressed region, I think we clearly said we were only talking about the Newburgh area. And I think that particular connection adds other...that particular language after the comma suggests there may be more. And I don't think that was our intention.
So whereas is down, it says the city of Newburgh. Does that cover it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If I would amend that, I'd recommend we just scratch "given" and that whereas after the comma, "given" at this county all the way through the region, and just stop there and go ahead with Newburgh. Because I think that's what really only we're talking about is Newburgh.
You want to strike Newburgh out of it?
No, no. Whereas number nine, I think is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. After the commas, just scratch out from the word "given" to the end of that whereas, and then continue on. That'd be my amendment, just so that we make it clear we're talking about just the Newburgh area.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Aye. Okay, Carrie now? Good. Carrie, okay, now on the resolution. You ready for roll call? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Brexha. Seventeen ayes, three noes.
Okay, resolution number nine.
Legislators Simmons, Amo, Berkman, Bonisek, Benelli, Hines, Kulasek, and Chemnitz, resolution recognizing February as Black History Awareness Month.
Majority Leader Bonisek? Definitely. Same thing with the Democratic Caucus. And Michael? Okay, everybody's on it, good. Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Ikis...I'm sorry. Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Brexha. Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution number ten.
Legislators Bonisek, DeSalvo, Ryskevich, and Kulasek, resolution of the Orange County Legislature making a determination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker with respect to the proposed amendments Agriculture and Farmland Protection Plan to the Orange County Comprehensive Plan.
Discussion? Carrie, you want to be added? Okay. Roll. Roll. Shannon wants to be added, too? Okay, roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Brexha. Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution number eleven.
Legislators Bonisek, DeSalvo, Ikis, and Kulasek, resolution of the Orange County Legislature adopting amendments to the Orange County Comprehensive Master Plan, Agricultural and Farmland Protection Plan for Orange County pursuant to section nine point zero two of the Orange County Administrative Code.
I just have a comment. Before the meeting, everyone was given an email that I received this afternoon from Commissioner David Church regarding a change to the text of the document. It was recommended by the New York State Ag Markets Department that we note in the document itself that the town of Warwick has completed and adopted an agricultural and farmland protection plan in 2012. They would like us to include that information in the plan. Mr. Church has agreed to do that and believes that it belongs in the plan. And so that when you read the resolution, the one, two, three... Yes, the third, whereas it's changed to read testimony and written comments were reviewed by the Planning Department staff, the Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board, as well as the Planning Board, and considered by this legislature prior to the adoption of the proposed amendments. That's the change to the document itself, as well as a change to this resolution.
Okay, roll call. All right, Paul? Yes? Yes, go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to recognize the diligent work of the Orange County Planning Department in preparing this document and with the support and active involvement of both the Orange County Planning Board and the Orange County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. This process took time, but it resulted in a very good document and one I'm proud to support.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, and Brexha. Twenty ayes.
Okay, number twelve is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators DeSalvo, Simmons, Hines, and Turnbull, bond resolution dated February fifth, 2015. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York authorizing partial reconstruction of the Orange County Jail located in Methana Goshens, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Brexha. Nineteen ayes, one no.
Okay, number thirteen also a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Cheney, Benton, and DeSalvo, bond resolution dated February fifth, 2015. Bond resolution of the county of Orange, New York authorizing rehabilitation improvements to the Glenmere Lake Dam located in the towns of Warwick and Chester, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is three million, three hundred, appropriating two million, nine hundred and seventy-five, therefore, in addition to the three hundred and twenty-five previously appropriated, authorizing the issuance of seven hundred and seventy-five bonds of the county to finance a portion of said additional appropriation, and authorizing the expenditure of one million, one hundred, expected to be received from the town of Chester, and one million, one hundred, expected to be received from the village of Florida towards the cost thereof, or redemption of the bonds or notes issued therefore, or to be budgeted as an offset to the taxes for the payment of principal and interest on said bonds or notes.
Discussion? Paul? Yes, Jeff, same thing?
I see that there's a change, and I appreciate the change with the replacement, which makes it better. But it still doesn't address a concern I have of towns being on record as accepting their portion. It says somewhere that we expect those towns to pay, but it doesn't say that the towns will. It doesn't say what the towns are going to do. So I think that's a problem.
Yes, this afternoon, I received the order from the DEC. It said, what's the compliance schedule for all three municipalities for repair of the dam? And in that document, it requires that all three parties are jointly and separately liable for the responsibilities for the... That's the...that is a DEC order for the repair and for compliance and for everyone to share in the cause. So the Law Department has drafted the interim unit of agreement for signature by all three parties. Of course, at this point, it's not yet signed by all of the municipalities. And I believe, as the county attorney mentioned, we do have other recourse in the event they do not pay their respective costs through either bringing legal protection or pursuant to the sales tax agreement, holding off on payment of their sales tax amounts that's due under the consent order.
Um, it's hard to believe, and I guess I have to thank the DEC for that. But the only thing, again, that I think is in question, which Mr. Berkman brought up, is the length of time. We are putting forward this bond and this money, and we're worried about when reimbursement will happen. And of course, that's just right out of the box because we found out that we already spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars on engineering. Hundred forty-six, thank you. And we're, you know, we haven't been reimbursed for that yet. So again, I would like to see, I believe it's Mr. Berkman would, an actual contract of agreement with length of time in there and so on, so that it's done in an appropriate manner.
For Lee goes, we're under the gun with this. I think this has to be completed, substantially completed by December of 2015. So I don't think we have that luxury to wait for the contract. I mean, I feel fine that we have the hammer, whether it's the sales tax or litigation, to get our money. We're going to get our money, our money, not our money, the rest of the county taxpayers outside of Florida and Chester, one way or the other, we're going to get it. I feel very confident with that. But I don't want to get another fine from DEC, which the three of us are going to be...three municipalities are going to be responsible for. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was going to say that time is of the essence. The Law Department is trying to prepare us and get everything done, so that I think it's April first or April fifteenth, whatever the DEC scheduled get-your-shovels-in-the-ground-and-get-started date is, so that we're ready, everything is ready to go. As soon as we get the final approval of the plan from the DEC, which obviously will have to be before their own drop dead date, then Langdon and the Law Department will be able to get the IMA signed. But again, we are under the gun. We need to get this started. We are ordered to get this started, and we are ordered to get it finished, I believe, not just substantially, but completely by December thirty-first.
I think you're right, I stand corrected. Legislative Bureau?
I asked a question in committee regarding to a hundred and forty-six thousand engineering costs. The village of Florida and the town of Chester, they haven't even been billed yet, they haven't been invoiced. So I mean, the question, if you haven't been reimbursed yet, they haven't even been billed.
Yes, posthaste. Okay, legislature Simmons, you want to say something?
Just that I share the concerns of the people who have already spoken as to reimbursement. But I also agree with the chairman that I think we actually have the ultimate hammer when it comes to the sharing of the sales tax revenue. And, you know, we could make sure that they don't get their monies out of sales tax until we're reimbursed. I don't think that's an issue. I mean, it's an ultimate hammer to make sure that, you know, we are taken care of. So I'm willing to let it go at this point.
I think that's true, right? We can't hold the sales tax legally. So there's our hammer right there. Okay. Any other questions, legislature? Let me go to Paul first, then you, Jim.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the urgency for this and the need to do it. I know we've all received fines. I think the village of Florida has probably received the most fines so far, and they are, you know, certainly willing and ready to sign the agreement and move forward with this. You know, as Mr. Benton said, this is something we have to do, so let's move forward and get it done. Thank you. Legislative Berkman?
Very pleased to hear that the village is willing to take their responsibility for one-third. And I just had a question for council. You said that with the language put forth by the DEC, do you feel that if legal action were to be taken, that that would decide the matter in our favor? I mean, I know nobody's got a crystal ball, but do you think that's strong enough language? I mean, I understand we could back it up with sales tax, but if we're talking about a million dollars, you know, with these municipalities, it could take some time to get a million dollars together. I mean, I'd rather have it all cleared up before it gets to threats.
Well, it does say jointly and severally, so bottom line is the project has to be done. How we go about recouping the monies is something we have to either withdraw, you know, take the monies out of their sales tax distributions or, you know, court intervention. That can take a life on to its own. Nothing is guaranteed when you go to court, but we have the DEC order behind us. So I believe that gives us a great case to go into court.
The DEC language doesn't specify...I know we're all jointly and separately liable, but is it your legal opinion that that would be a firm commitment for a three-way split? Or in other words, I mean, it could be, the DEC doesn't really care. DEC knows that we have the county on the hook, the county's ready to go forward.
I would say we have a great case. You never know what courts do, but I believe we'd have a very good case before the court.
Wish it had been signed before about the just level.
County exec, you want to say a few words?
Mr. Chairman, and likely here. When this was started, Ed Diana was the county executive, I was the supervisor in Chester. Because Orange County was the big government entity, they kind of steered the way this went. We were all on the hook from the DEC, the three municipalities, and some of the costs that were incurred initially, the engineering and things like that, are going to be recouped one-third. And I have no doubt in my mind that the village of Florida and the town of Chester are going to pay. They needed to wait for this DEC approval to come down. I contacted the village of Chester last night, they have a meeting next Wednesday, they said, done. You want us to pass this, we will. But in those meetings were the county executive and the county attorney at the time, the mayor of Florida, and there is his attorney, the town of Chester, and our attorney at the time. And I can assure you, now that we're moving forward on this, and again, I agree with what Dennis and everybody else is saying, if we needed to, we'd do that. But I have full faith in those two municipalities, that they are going to pay. And I think both councils reflect that, too. So your concerns are well-worded, but I believe, based on having those discussions back then when it was first brought up to us and the municipalities were on the hook, that was the agreement. Because borrowing a million dollars for a dam for the village of Florida and the town of Chester is significantly more of an impact than Orange County, just the size of the government. So that's just telling you some insight of what was happening back then and where we are today.
Thank you, I think that covers a lot. Okay, are we ready for roll call? Okay, legislature Sullivan?
Just a question. Can somebody tell me why a contract hasn't been drawn up?
Langdon?
Already?
Yes, right?
Well, it's been drawn up, but the bottom line is the DEC has yet to give final approval to all the plans. I wouldn't recommend that we sign an IMA. Let's say the DEC refuses to approve the plans, then we think they're reasonable. Let's say they insist we do something else. We want to reserve all rights. I don't necessarily want to sign an IMA saying we agree to do all these things until we get the DEC's approval of exactly what the dam is. We expect them to approve it. They all but approved it in a submission we made last year. They had some tweaks, we resubmitted to address the tweaks. We get the final approval from them, we'll sign the IMA. I don't think there's any issue with it, but you would never recommend to a client, at least I wouldn't recommend to a client, that you sign a final IMA until you get a final plan in place. The final plan is in place until the DEC gives a final approval.
Okay, you ready for roll call? Roll call.
Bonisek, Ikis, Amo, Agnastakis, Benton, Berkman, Benelli, Cheney, DeSalvo, Hines, Chemnitz, Kulasek, Paduk, Ryskevich, Simmons, Sullivan, Turnbull, Vero, Wong, Brexha. Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution number fourteen.
Legislators Kulasek and Vero, resolution of the Orange County Legislature giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker with respect to the Orange County Runway Three... seeker with respect to the Orange County runway three dash twenty-one RSA improvement project and Goshen wetland mitigation site and recommending this project to be a type one action.
Want a second, Sean? Oh, Paul, okay, because John's probably on it. Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Bent, I'm sorry, Anagnostakis, that's a no. Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? Breschak? Nineteen ayes, one no.
Okay, resolution number 15.
Legislators Amo, Ruskovich, and Ikas, resolution reappointing members to the Board of Health of Orange County Health District pursuant to sections three four three and three four four of the public health law and section seven point zero four of the Orange County Administrative Code.
Question? Yes, minority leader. Ikas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to indicate that I'm very familiar with Dr. Mishra, and, and that they, he and his wife have saved many lives in Orange County. And the fact that he is willing to serve on this board, we should consider ourselves extremely lucky, and so I hope we're unanimous on this.
I know Mr. Hayes, and he is a very qualified individual in emergency management. Okay, roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? Breschak? Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution 16.
Legislators Ruskovich and Vero, resolution authorizing the county executive to accept 12 Dell Venue 11 Pro 5130 tablets and software on behalf of the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to section two one five of the county law.
Second.
Question? Roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? And Breschak? Twenty ayes.
Resolution seventeen?
Go collectively, seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm asleep at the switch here again, okay. So, which ones it is? Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen collectively. Okay, discussion? Roll call. Paul, I'm sorry, Paul. Yes. Now, roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? And Breschak? Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution twenty.
Legislators Benton, DeSalvo, and Simmons, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create three probation assistance positions at the Orange County Department of Probation pursuant to section two point zero two I of the Orange County Charter.
Question? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to vote yes for this today, but I'm, I continue to hear rather disturbing things about how these $30 fees are being assessed. Now, you know, maybe it's not true, I'm going to talk to Mr. Miller and see what he has to say about it, but my complaint previously has been that there is very little supervision that $30 fees collected, they come into probation, pay their fee, and off they go without any contact with a probation officer. Now, what I'm hearing is, just mail your check in, you don't have to come in, just mail in the check. So, I'm finding this, like, what are we paying for? What are these probation officers for? And I think this supervisory aspect of probation is extremely important. So, I'll be talking to Mr. Miller about it, I'll support this today, but I have concerns.
Okay, Legislature Simmons?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the same type of unfounded accusations that were brought up the last time, when we had a committee meeting, and we actually brought in Mr. Miller. He told us that they, that they were allegations, and that they were unfounded. And very truthfully, I have to say, I don't think this is a point, point to bring this up here. You want to bring it up at a committee meeting, and have a man there, and have him, give him a chance to go ahead and answer these allegations, but to put them on the legislative floor at this time, I think is wrong.
Legislature Turnbull?
Yeah, not to go back and forth on this, Mr. Simmons, but Mr. Miller told me that what I had claimed is true, that probationers come into the department, people on probation come in, and they do not always see a probation officer. So, I'm framing this the correct way, I'm a legislator, I have concerns, and this is very important to me, I think it's very important to the people of Orange County. Thank you.
We'll bring it up at committee. Legislature Hines?
Yeah, we had Mr. Miller, and I think it was two months ago, to go over this with us, and what he said was, if probationers don't give their job, their source of income, they then are called in to explain what their situation is, because they don't want to fill out the forms as to what they're doing. That's when they have to come in and mail their checks in, or whatever the case may be. But this is a move in the right direction. This legislature took money out of the sheriff's budget for overtime, moved it over here because we saw a need in probation. And enhancing probation hopefully will stop people from being put back into jail, where it costs us even more money. But Mr. Miller created these positions that don't currently exist. They are going to run the probation D W Y program, all three of these people, bring up three senior probation officers to go back in the field, and hopefully make Orange County a little bit safer. So, this is a good thing, no matter how it needs to be spun, but as chairman of public safety, if Mr. Miller needs to come back in and answer more questions, I'm happy to ask him, he's always been happy to answer anybody's questions. If you ask him a question, he'll give you a three-hour answer, or a 10-minute answer, whichever you prefer, because he is a wealth of knowledge and he's an asset to Orange County. I just wanted to clear that up.
How true, how true. Okay, roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? Breschak? Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution twenty-one.
Chairman Breschak, resolution appointing members of Labor Relations Advisory Committee pursuant to Article Four, Section G of the legislative manual.
Question? Paul?
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? Breschak? Twenty ayes.
Okay, resolution number twenty-two.
Chairman Breschak, resolution appointing members of the Orange County Economic Development Gaming Committee pursuant to Article Four, Section G of the legislative manual.
Question? Roll call.
Bonnison?
Yes.
Ikas?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Berkman? Benelli? Cheney? DeSalvo? Hines? Chemnitz? Kulasek? Paduk? Ruskovich? Simmons? Sullivan? Turnbull? Vero? Wong? Breschak? Twenty ayes, Mr. Chairman and the desk is clear.
Okay, public participation, Gerald N. Jacobowitz regarding the county exec veto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and by the way, Steve, your comments about Charlie Wallace on Channel Six were very appropriate, and I'm sure the family appreciates all your good words. I'm here in connection with an item on your agenda that was Communication B, which is a response to you from the county executive that he has vetoed the local law for 2014, dealing with the county government center. I understand I have three minutes, and I'll try to honor that. The county's financial condition is uppermost in the minds of all of you. That's a very important item, it's been made very clear to the public, and you're confronted with the dilemma of how do you deal with the county government center in the face of conflicting suggestions? The way that you would normally go about your business is that you would do an analysis of all the possible choices, and the analyses would then be discussed and debated, and then you would come to a decision. You did that in February of 2013, when you adopted the resolution. However, things change, nothing is for sure in life, and things have changed, and there is more information, and that I think the public expects that you're all going to give attention to those things. You can't do that if you don't override the county executive's veto, because that legislation gave you the opportunity, and the county the opportunity, to sit down and discuss many of the issues that you've heard about in the newspapers, received emails about, and are being deluged with from various sources. I have put together something that I think is relevant for your consideration, and it deals with money, and the conclusion that I've reached is using the local finance law, the resolution you adopted for this county office building, and the county's debt schedule. So, I'd like to just give you the highlights of that, and with your permission, we reduced it on one sheet. If we could hand that up so that all the members could get that, that would be appreciated. Is that, is that okay? Okay. Gary will give it to whomever you want. The sheet that you're getting has more on it than here. What's on the sheet is the analysis that gets you to this set of conclusions. And this set of conclusions is that the two-building plan creates less debt by $27 million. There's a smaller annual principal payment to service the debt by $1,393,333. You'll pay less interest of $6,600,000, even though the bond issue can be 30 years, not 25. You're a 25 issue because you're doing a renovation. If it's a new building, it's 30 years. So, even using the 30-year spread out, your interest will be $660,000 less. And therefore, combining the debt and the interest compared to the B B plan, you're going to have a smaller debt responsibility going forward of $33,600,000.
Jerry, please sum it up. Good, it's three minutes, we got 10 speakers, so.
I appreciate it. I think that's the point that I want to make, which if you don't override the veto, you'll have no opportunity to explore, to discuss, and probe to prove Jerry Jacobowitz was wrong. So, that alone should be an inducement for you to override the veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, Robert Andrews Warwick on the Government Center?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Twenty years ago, I moved to Warwick. And 20 years ago, I created the first graduate program in the United States titled Design Management at Pratt Institute. Its purpose was to teach architects and designers about management and leadership. A leader is someone who listens to differing ideas, is flexible, and is willing to change course, and accept a better idea when it comes along. Each of you is an elected leader, asked to represent your constituents on local issues that arise before this government legislature. And now, because of the Paul Rudolph Design Government Center, you have been pushed beyond the borders of Orange County and thrust into a national spotlight, and asked to make a decision that will be watched well beyond our county borders to a national and perhaps even an international level. Each of you has an opportunity to provide leadership, and you can either make history or destroy history. You can make history by being a leader and voting for the Kaufman proposal to repurpose the Rudolph Building, and get two buildings instead of one for millions less, receive $5 million, add a major building to the tax rolls, and get a new government building designed from scratch instead of a hacked-up addition. Or you can destroy history by rejecting the Kaufman proposal, allowing the C P L plans to proceed, butchering what part of the Rudolph Building is not destroyed, overspend by millions, admire $5 million less in your bank account, and not increase the tax rolls. What will you do? If you proceed to destroy what the New York Times architectural critic Michael Kimmelman referred to as an architectural bastard's work, your actions will not only be deemed as fiscally irresponsible, naive, and a major cultural loss, not only to Orange County, but to New York State and the nation. Mr. Kimmelman ended his recent article by stating, quote, "History is on the government's side too," as hoping county legislators are, end of quote. As an Orange County taxpayer, I hope that you can truly act as leaders and not followers by not squandering my tax dollars, and I respectfully ask that you vote for the Kaufman proposal. It's the only one that makes fiscal, cultural, and historic sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to give you some information which you may or might not have already gotten. The, most of you know me because I've lived in this area for over 40 years, and I've practiced architecture in this area, and I know what the costs are. I've done buildings that have been of greater value in terms of dollars than what we're looking at at the moment. The cost that you're being given by the C P L group is considerably more than we should be paying as Orange County citizens. The, when I say more, I am saying it is, and I can prove my figures if anybody wishes to consult with me at any time. I know that you're, you're taking a lot of what I'm saying for granted at the moment, but I have the calculations, and I have the figures, and there is so much profit in the C P L package, that if in fact they go ahead and do this project, I, I plan to propose that the newspapers see, and this is not meant as a threat, but nobody is asked for the proof of why we are paying as much. I have the proof. We have an opportunity to go with a less expensive option at this moment, and the only way we can do it is to go with the plan that's being offered. If, if, if the, the plan that's being offered by Kaufman is absolutely dollar-wise of tremendous saving for the Orange County taxpayers. for the Orange County taxpayers. And if we're going to move forward and say, let's override new houses veto, then let's leave that option to say at the same time, let's go with the Kaufman plan because the other option was even a greater expense than CPL is offering. We would be going from the fire into the fire, into the fire, we'd be going from the frying pan into the fire if we went with the Pike proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Schuster, Jacobowitz on the Government Center for the veto, brother.
Everybody, a few points to make. The current path you're on, the renovation is budgeted at $74 million. We know that many of you think that is too high and some of you regret voting for it. It is not too late to change direction. I think there is a consensus among you that government offices should be centralized again in Goshen on Erie Street. There's no need to argue about that. You can make a commitment to do that. There's a lot of talk about acting quickly and getting things done, but even with the renovation plan, there will be no occupancy in this building for at least two years and probably longer. Leasing offices around the county is going to continue for two years. So acting fast really isn't acting that fast. Clark Patterson Lee also has work to do on its architectural plans and they will not be ready for months yet. There is time to consider better options. The Kaufman plan will get the courts running within a year of approvals. Destruction of the historic building will bring national and perhaps international criticism and scorn and ridicule to Orange County and Goshen and some of this has already begun. It's also apparent that although the official position of the village seems to be opposition, we know that there is considerable public support in Goshen for a two-building solution and that will probably become more evident as time goes by. Finally, the county executive has a number of RFP proposals and we urge you to ask of them. You can also reauthorize a new RFP with a short timetable for return and all those bidders who have already done their work can respond to that. So we urge you to commit to a two-building solution on the Erie Street site, override the veto so you can negotiate over the Kaufman plan, reauthorize a new RFP, amend and reduce the $74 million finance resolution. And finally, we recognize that you have worked long and hard to get where you are today, but something better has come along. So please have an open mind and do what is best for the constituents. Thank you.
Howard Prower, Jacobowitz on the County Execs Veto. I don't see Howard, is he, he's not here, Jerry?
Heard so far about the dollars and the speed with which you were, and what it would cost you. I want to talk to you from a different perspective, from a historical and preservation perspective. So I want you to please give serious consideration to the Kaufman proposal. Your vote is being looked upon from coast to coast and internationally. Please realize this is not a short, over and done with vote. The implications are quite far-reaching. Sent you a quote and a photograph earlier today. That was from the Farewell to Penn Station essay by Eva Louise Huxtable, a story that gave birth to a preservation law creating a broad preservation effort for individual buildings, historic neighborhoods and districts and parks. This law was challenged and upheld in the United States Supreme Court, much to our benefit. Effort was challenged regarding the destruction of Grand Central. Well, why was this done? Because the effort was meant to enrich the lives of our generation and generations to come. At the present time, you, the legislators, are the stewards of this building. Criticizers went through a great, bold and costly effort to create a building that would reflect a changing and forward-looking Orange County. Bear in mind, as you vote, you have a fiduciary responsibility, their legacy. Please do not violate that responsibility by destroying what has been passed on to you for protection, not destruction. Place political pressures aside and as an individual, vote in the best interests of Orange County, both artistically and economically. But sadly, it seems that the news of that Penn Station event so many years ago is being ignored by or didn't reach the legislators of Orange County. The decision is directly related to that event, so please consider your vote very, very carefully. Thank you.
Good, Barry, now Walker on the veto.
Good afternoon. The Office of Court Administration has been pressuring the county to move into the Division III courtrooms. And I have to ask you, will they tolerate the delay caused by destruction of Division II? Because destruction of Division II will remove most of the physical plant, the heating, cooling and whatnot. So I don't know how you could get the courts into their rooms in less than two years. The Kaufman plan would speed that along and put them in there working in one year. One year. Now, I've spoken about the aesthetics of the building, historical perspective before, but the sheer dollar incentive aspect of this is overwhelming. $27 million less, $5 million in revenue, the Rudolph Building on the tax rolls, lower yearly cumulative total cost, lower yearly interest fees and financing costs, the possibility of increased tourism, increased sales tax revenues for onsite sales if, for instance, an art gallery opens there. That is just an overwhelming set of numbers. But if you don't override the new house veto, you will not get a chance to excel another day to reflect on something that was said earlier. Thank you.
Richard Wickel, Alph on the Government Center. Right here. Thank you, Francis. Salvatore Labruna, Goshen on the Government Center.
Thank you. My name is Salvatore Labruna, I live in the village of Goshen. I'm not an artist or an architect, simply a resident of Goshen that believes that proposal for an artist studios and event space in the Orange County Government Center is a historic opportunity that should not be missed. County's current renovation plan by the firm Clark Patterson Lee, on the other hand, represents the status quo, business-as-usual approach that has failed us time and time again. It also represents a classic example of an overblown government contract. I personally can't believe there's a fiscally conservative legislator in this state, let alone Orange County, that would support this kind of spending when we have a viable and more affordable alternative. I know that if I went to each of you individually and said, I know a way we could save the county $14 million, but we would require some hard work, all of you would be willing to put in the time and effort. I don't see any reason why we can't do the same collectively by taking advantage of Mr. Kaufman's proposal, which would save the county at least $14 million with the added economic benefit of an art center and a new government center building in Goshen. This legislature has now been criticized on the national stage because of the planned demolition and renovation of the government center. How can we expect to attract investment in this county when we make decisions like this? Orange County Partnership recently created a great economic development commercial to attract potential business to Orange County. But I could see investors watching it and thinking, but isn't this the county that with one decision wasted millions of taxpayer dollars, defaced a landmark and passed on a tremendous economic opportunity? Yes, that could be a scaring away investment in Orange County. There are people who hate the government center, people who love the government center, Republicans, Democrats, business owners, art lovers. There are many people who support this proposal and for many different reasons. I believe it's never too late or too hard to do what is right for the people of Orange County. As the president of the National Historic Trust has stated, while this issue has been in need of a solution for several years, it is clear that two more months of study and negotiation may lead to a solution that will best serve your constituency for another 45 years. This legislature, Mr. Chairman, can be known not only for getting things done but for doing the right. Let's get it together and make it happen. Let's sell the government center to Kaufman and build a new government center worthy of the people of Orange County right next to it. Otherwise, we're not just demolishing part of a landmark, we're demolishing the last bit of respect the people of this county have for this government. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not going to penalize you for leaving the room, so.
Thanks. Reference there. I apologize, I know what it's like to get a lot of email. Really am sorry that I am so compelled at this point in this game, this four-year game, to get information to you that I think you need to have. And I'm not doing a very good job of it because I stay up so late trying to work with the computer. Anyway, so for that reason, I have not prepared my words. I'm going to read to you a few paragraphs from the articles that I've been sending you because I'm not sure that you went all the way through them. This is from the New York Times article, Michael Kimmelman, architectural critic of the Times. "Orange County Legislators Should Take a Look at Rudolph's Art and Architecture Building at Yale." I know a couple of you have been over there. I've been there. My daughter was there for three years. We know what it was like before the change and I was astonished to see the publications of the renovation done by Guatemay Segal, the firm that Mr. Kaufman now heads up. Fantastic, you really ought to try, I know, you didn't want to go all the way over to Dartmouth, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, that was a long trip unless you were going to the Cape. New Haven is not that far away, get over there and see what a great job was done. Okay. It opened in 63, it was restored in several years by the firm of Goffe Segal. Ugly partitions, dropped ceilings from the unfortunate renovation were stripped away. Ears of contempt and neglect were erased. Does this sound familiar? Cramped, dark Byzantine spaces returned to how Rudolph intended them. Light-filled. What happened to those clear story windows at the government center? I'm sorry, I'm missing my phone. Light-filled, exalting with serendipitous, this just sounds like an architect, doesn't it? And a communal town-like connectedness. There's a syncopated flow to the building, concrete facade, its corduroy pattern bush-hammered by hand, looks quarried from some immense rock. They're respecting that, the texture of that surface. I'm sorry that the Orange County government looks so lousy now. It's because it hasn't been taken care of. It wasn't built properly to begin with, there were problems, I know, and there were leaks from the very first day. Okay. Almost miraculous, the restoration vindicates Rudolph from the loss of reputation that he's had recently. I'm just going to read another one, but never mind, I want to get to what I want to say. We now hear, what I have learned in the last week, we now hear that demolition is going to start by the end of this month. When we have no idea what the new building is going to look like, how can you pass on that? How can you say you want to go ahead if you don't know what you're getting? Demolition will start by removing Building Two from its foundation, we knew that, no surprise. But we were very surprised when my husband went to DPW yesterday to look at the RFP for demolition and he learned that they are removing all of the walls, all of the roof, all of the windows, all that will be left will be the skeleton, columns and floors, concrete. No sign of Rudolph left. Fine, you don't want an architect.
Please, please, conclude with three minutes, sorry.
All right, all right. I just want to say that the Kaufman solution makes so much sense economically, it saves time, a full year for the courts, updated, 18 months on the government going, and it saves money in a time when you have such a terrible deficit in the budget. How can you ignore that? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Daniel Mack, yes, is that you, Daniel Mack? No, I'm sorry. Daniel Mack from Warwick on the Government Center. Do you have a question, sir?
I was hoping to join the list of speakers.
All right, we'll preempt it, just try to sign up in time. All right. Hi, nice to be here, nice to have worked with many of you, been on committees with many of you, worked on various projects. Much of what I wanted to say has already been said here and I just want to share one kind of problem-solving tool that I've run into as a businessman recently. I enjoy fights with people, I enjoy calling people corrupt, I enjoy ranting at people, getting angry, that was me when I was a bit younger. Now, I've learned something called the blessing of insight, where instead of sort of drawing a line between you and the other person and daring them to cross it, you invite the other person into kind of a semi-religious moment where you agree to suspend your kind of animosity with each other and look for what you have together, what you have in common. And I think here you've already kind of progressed in this process. There have been resolutions, there have been votes, the thing is moving along. But a blessing of insight in this particular case would be a chance to give yourselves a chance to revisit this and incorporate some of the new information. I think what Jerry was saying is very important. Things have changed in the last year, there's the new climate. And I think as a kind of a generosity to yourselves, to the situation and to the people in Orange County, I wish you a blessing of insight. State your name for the record when you come up, please.
Jonathan Spudler-Haven Mills, County Woodbury. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The previous speakers have spoken to the value of the Rudolph Building and the reasons for considering the Kaufman plan. I'd like to address the objections to the Kaufman plan. First of all, I've heard that some people feel that the fact that he was late to the party is the problem, but we are now where we are now. I've heard that New York State would not accept a change which would change what's happening with the courts, but I'm rather certain that if they're shown that the courts will be available sooner, that they would find that acceptable. Also, that Goshen has a number of objections, or at least the government of Goshen does. And lastly, that $2 million has already been expended and that's, it would be seen as lost money if you made a change now. With Goshen, my understanding is that the Board of Goshen hasn't actually met with Kaufman. If that's the case, I would ask that you urge them to meet. If in fact Kaufman can complete his work faster than the alternative, complete two buildings rather than one and add a building to the tax rolls, I think that it's quite possible. possible that their objections would melt away. As to the $2 million spent, if there is an overall savings of a great deal more than that, I think it would be foolish to chase after $2 million and ignore 10 times that amount. If the, if in fact it is possible that the Kaufman Plan can meet these objections, can erect a suitable county building, can rehabilitate an architecturally significant structure, create an arts center, add to the tax rolls and save us all money, I think that it's certainly worth your effort to investigate if these things can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn with, yes, this gentleman, okay, John, okay, then we're done, right?
Yeah. You remember.
I remember. But you got to remember to sign up on time next time.
Oh, actually, I had a, I have chores at home and it's kind of hard to get down here. And I just, between the snow and all my things, here are my animals.
Okay, so three minutes, I let it go over a little bit, but try to keep.
I don't know if any of you have read the report from LaBella Associates about the new, the present Government Center, which also included the complete process of all the buildings in the county. And if you had read that report, you would know why you should renovate rather than rebuild. After reading the accessory report made by LaBella Associates presented to legislation January 9, 2012, I questioned Mr. Kaufman's plans for the renovation of the Government Center and his plans to construct a new Government Center which includes a court facility and a library, and a new parking facility, which I don't think anybody really knows that much about. I would like Mr. Kaufman to explain how he is going to renovate the Government Center into an artist studio, meeting areas and conference centers, and bring all of the facilities and lighting, electric, windows, air conditioning, elevator, which has to be made handicap accessible, 87 roofs, doing the sheath, making the building handicap accessible, and also the supporting infrastructure, plumbing, et cetera, on $114 million. By making wine and renovations, it can't be done. Will he be able to bring the entire building up to code? And if he doesn't, how does he expect a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector? He's doing his job. I understand there could be a random problem with the construction of the new Government Center. This testing on the other place indicated there was excessive random gas. Has Mr. Kaufman looked into this possibility? There is also a problem with the wetlands. What has been done is all this, because the upper north end of the property is still wetlands. How will they arrive at, how will they arrive at 144,000 square feet for the Government Center when the buildings are made up of the Government Center, courthouse and library? How is this space going to be allocated and to who? How will the new parking facility covered in the overall cost of, how is that covered in the overall cost of $66 million? Is the mall in the center of the place? How is that covered? Where does that money come from? How will space be allocated for the Government Center? I believe that the point is no one actually knows. Have any force sampling been made? Because I understand building a new Government Center at the opposite end of the parking lot would require piles or some support for the new building. If this is true, at what cost? Has the zoning problems with the village been resolved? And if it hasn't, is he going, what is he going to do to get it accepted? If it isn't accepted? Has anyone looked into the zoning for the area? I feel there are numerous items that have not been discussed. For example, parking restrictions, location of parking facilities to the building entrance, landscaping, compatibility with other buildings in the area. After reading the LaBella Government Center survey, it is obvious there are numerous problems with the external and internal portions of the center, and the complete renovation is the only solution, short of tearing it down and building another center. If the building is retained by the county, it is estimated that the present 144,000 square feet will be increased to 194,000 square feet and be able to house most of the government agencies, thus resulting in a much more efficient operation. The ultimate cost is the estimate of $74 million, which is not unreasonable when you consider all the facilities will be brought up to code, and it will be a lot less than constructing a new Government Center at code than Mr. Kaufman. I believe his $66 million estimate for a new Government Center is not conclusive, and the real cost will be much more. I, all right, this.
I must turn John.
I think what it is, and I'm basically saying is Kaufman's blowing smoke. I don't think he can do, I don't think he can do the renovations in his building for $14 million, considering all the things that are wrong with it. I don't believe he can build a new building for $66 million when he's not including other options. I think he's, I think he's.
John, please.
That's what I said.
John, John, please. Okay. Okay, I think we're, this is getting carried away now. I'm not going to allow this anymore. If you had signed up at the beginning, then, you know, it's real, I shouldn't allow it to begin with.
Well, thank you for doing it.
I'm sorry, ma'am. You have three, all right, you're the last speaker, that's it, okay? Very liberal with the three-minute rule on the speakers, and it's not going to be allowed again. We've got to have some semblance.
I appreciate it, but some of us have work issues that make it very difficult to get here at 3:30 PM on an afternoon. Perhaps if some of the meetings were held in the evening, they would be better attended. Some of us do work. Thank you. My name is Gloria Venelli, no relation. I am a resident of Goshen for the past eight years, resident of Orange County for over 20 years. Much of what I had wanted to say, which is why I held back, was addressed. However, for any of those of you, and I'm sure that probably doesn't include those of you on the dais who are not aware of Mr. Kaufman's firm, I urge you to go online and do a little Googling and look up, this is a very reputable firm. He has renovated at least one prior Rudolph Building. He sits on the boards of many, many arts and other organizations, and I find it difficult to imagine why anyone would call his integrity into question at this point. He has attended various meetings. He will attend meetings with anyone who asks him to. He has charts, he has figures, he has numbers. This is a professional man who would not be in the position that he's in, in the profession that he's in, and he's highly, highly regarded if he had not been able to back up what he presents. He's not blowing smoke anywhere. He has one uppermost interest in mind, and that is to save the Rudolph Building. Personally, that's not my interest. When I first drove through Goshen, beautiful, stunning village, when I was a visitor from New York City and I came upon the government building, I could not believe the atrocity of this building in that village. I thought it was the ugliest thing. However, you know, we all learn new things, we come to conclusions, we come to an understanding. We need, we desperately need what this Kaufman Plan could bring to our community, and I urge you, I urge you to reconsider this veto. It's not too late, and there's nothing more that I can say that hasn't been said already. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's let her in Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the way you ran the meeting today. Thank you for allowing the few extra people to speak. I think on your shoulders rests in the next 30 days where there, an override veto vote will occur. I understand there may not be the votes, the 14 votes for that override, but I wanted the record to be clear, because I've heard many people say, "How could this legislature move forward with the costliest plan available under the financial strain and situation that this county is in?" And this legislature, again, I want to make it clear for the record, took a vote of 18 to 3 to move forward with that costliest plan, but the record needs to reflect that against that costliest plan were Mr. Simmons, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Enegno Stoffice. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, which I should have done earlier, for Charles Wallace, who was tragically struck by a van beginning of January and passed away Tuesday night. He was a pillar of our community, Commissioner of the Montgomery Fire District, and he will be sadly, sadly missed throughout our community. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.